None of which ever got paid. And it struck me as odd that nobody wants to pay to get that kind of money for the city. There have been all kinds of situations where you just can't be everywhere all the time. The port has its lobbyists, the port has its legal team, the port has its PR department. They have people working 24/7, 365, to jealously defend their interests. And we have decided that the best way to oppose that situation is to have duplicative citizen committees managed by city managers. And I guess the idea is that, you know, all of us, you know, pitching in can do a great job of it. And I would suggest that with a situation where hundreds of millions of dollars in damage are on the table, it would behoove our cities to pony up at least a certain amount of money on an ongoing basis to manage the problem, which is a chronic problem. It will not go away. The other thing that I am thinking about is how people after the third runway, so many wrote in newspaper articles, "Well, at least the airport's gone as far as it can go." The airport has not gone as far as it can go. And if you think this is the last expansion, you're crazy. So you're going to be dealing with this 10 years from now, 15, 25 years from now. So you may as well have a system in place to adequately manage it. Otherwise, you're going to be dealing with it in an ad hoc way every five, 10, 15 years and losing. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who didn't get a chance to sign up who wishes to speak on items that are on tonight's agenda? Please state your name and the city in which you live.
Sheila Brush, Des Moines, Washington. I just want to remind everybody, since we have a nice audience, about Monday night, September 10th, from 5:30 to 8:30, Highline Community College. Looking at the boards, I can see the Marina has a beautiful future, but it will not be pleasant if we have planes flying overhead every 60 to 90 seconds. So please come to the port's open house on scoping. You will have similar boards, I'm sure, to learn exactly what the expansion's going to be. I don't know if they're going to be honest about the impacts, but there'll be plenty of us up there to inform you of the true impacts. So I look forward to seeing all these faces Monday night and all of you at home watching, because I know there's hundreds. Monday night is the place to be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing no one come forward. This doesn't seem like it's working either anymore. Is it working? No. Okay, let's just, I feel like I'm at a press conference. Let's try this one. How's this?
Check. Yeah, that one's working. Okay, well, let's just see what happens.
Okay, with council's indulgent, we have a housekeeping item that does require a motion. It's item number three, and that's to set a public hearing to consider draft ordinance 18-101 related to the landmark on the sound zoning reclassification. Michael was going to make a few comments on it. It seemed like something we could just get off tonight's agenda rather quickly. Councilmember Nutting?
I do have to say that I got to recuse myself from making a decision on this.
Because of your affiliation with the--
Because of my affiliation with the Masons.
Okay, thank you. So when a vote takes place, councilmember Nutting will not be voting. Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to Michael.
Just briefly, Mayor, what we're doing is taking the current RM 900B residential multifamily zone to be rezoned institutional campus, which brings it into compliance with the city's comprehensive plan. So requesting a motion to hold a public hearing on September 27th, and this would be a quasi-judicial proceeding.
All right, I make a motion to set a public hearing on September 27th, 2018, or soon thereafter, as a matter may be heard, to consider draft ordinance 18-01, admitting Des Moines Municipal Code 18.10.050, adoption of an official zoning map to reclassify partial 1722049023 from RM 900B to residential multifamily zone to IC institutional campus zone for the landmark on the sound property.
We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Pennington and a second by Councilmember Banks. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes 6-0. Okay, so at this point, are you ready to go to emergency, emerging issues?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then I will turn the mic over to City Manager Mathias.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's better that these not work here than when you're playing a music venue. So, with the band. Okay, a couple of things. Just bring council up to date. So we talked earlier about SCORE, and Federal Way has actually taken an action to, at least from the city's perspective, to leave SCORE. And there's a process that'll be at least a year in the making before they're able to do that. And there's a number of kind of legal and financial implications of doing that. I know that our city attorney is looking at what those are. And we will provide more information. We were able, we had a meeting this week, councilmember Back, who's our alternate, Tim George, our city attorney, Ken, our police chief, and Beth Ann, our finance director, with the new executive director of SCORE. And instead of it being a kumbaya event, it was a very candid, direct conversation about how we, the costs that we're experiencing are not sustainable for the city of Des Moines, that we need to find some either manner of relief or reform, or review what our options are relative to the future. So there's a lot more to come, and we'll discuss that more as we go. I want to echo Sheila Brush's comment that we have, today we attended what was called the Public Agency Scoping for the Sustainable Airport Master Plan at the airport. That involved cities, different jurisdictions, kind of being explained, the process, the environmental review process, and where we have options to comment on the scoping. And we had, as everyone knows, the four cities, Des Moines, Bury, and Sea-Tac, and Normandy Park, have joined together and have contracted with a consultant. And we got our first opportunity to see the value of that today. Our consultants came, and they were outstanding. Let me just say they're outstanding. We're playing at a different level with them involved. So that was really exciting. But I wanted to echo that this is now a process, the airport's going through the port relative to the Sustainable Airport Master Plan, the environmental review, and there's a process that initiates that review called the scoping of what they're going to review in the environmental process. And the public and agencies like the city and our consultants and our SEPA officials, Susan Caesar was there with me as our SEPA official, we will comment, and the public is able to comment, on what is the kind of context for the environmental review and aspects that should be considered if they're not already in the kind of documents that they're presenting. And so that will be September 10th at Highline College, 5:30 to 8:30 PM. We encourage everyone with an interest in this to attend and comment, as they are inclined, on the scoping of the environmental process. This is not the environmental review. This is establishing what the basis and framework for that review will be. And as we go forward, we'll have opportunities to comment on the exact environmental mitigation that's proposed, based on what they want to accomplish. Let's see. I want to also let the council know that this morning, the city experienced successful sale of our bonds. $3.3 million is now sitting in a bank to be expended. And it was a very successful sale, consistent with the upgrade that we had in the process we described a few days ago. So we're going to have Caitlin come next week. She's already addressed the council once, and kind of give everyone an update on that process and where we are and what the final interest rate structure was. Beth Ann, any? Thank God. Okay, great. And then, last but not least, we also have Ken Rogers here. I'm going to ask Ken to step up to the microphone, if he wishes, and give us an update on the quarter deck.
Thank you for that opportunity. Right now, all the permits have been secured. The, for those of you that don't know, this is a project down next to the Marina office, just directly east of the guest mortgage area. Permits are secured, licenses are all secured as well. Currently, I'm working on the ADA accessible wheelchair ramp. Once that's complete, I'll have a couple inspections left from the Health Department and from the Fire Marshal, and then we should be underway. The Marina staff and city staff have been exceedingly supportive and helpful, and I want to express my appreciation to those folks, especially those down at the Marina who have helped as much as you could possibly ask for.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I think from our, well, from our side, the thing is, every time we're down there, we run into you, so we better be treating you well, so.
No, I was being--
Glad to hear it, so.
So I want to talk to you about the, or just have a question about the consultant that we've hired for the scoping process for the Port of Seattle. Could you give us a little bit of their background and their expertise in this particular field?
Yeah, it was really cool to see. So we didn't hire actually a consultant. We hired a group of consultants that worked together on these issues throughout the nation. And some of them are located in Washington, DC, work directly with Congress and the FAA. The gentleman who, one gentleman who was here was from Atlanta, and he's kind of the operations expert relative to aircraft movements in the FAA. Another gentleman from Portland, who is here today, is kind of the environmental review expert. And I think what was, you know, just to be honest, really what was cool is, I mean, they're coming together, the four cities, we're stronger, we have our SEPA officials engaged in this. But what was really a thing of beauty was the response of, I think that the airport may not have anticipated the level of expertise that we have now engaged to help us in this process. So they have expertise across the board on all things related to airports, FAA operations, environmental issues, and solutions to overflights and a lot of different aspects. And those are just starting to come out, but we're really excited by their abilities.
Thank you for the clarification. So the group of cities have pulled together to spend quite a bit of money to hire these national-level experts to work with all of our city staffs, all of our internal experts, and to collaborate with our citizens. So we really have invested in not one city, investing in one FTE, but a group of cities investing in a firm that has the national-level expertise to deal with this, issues for all of us. So I would say that we have invested in taking care of our citizens and our interests, all of us together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes my report.
Well, I believe that takes us to item, I'm sorry, the numbers changed. It takes us to our Marina redevelopment update. And I may conclude your report, Michael, but you're back on.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So, you know, it's kind of the main order of business here tonight. And, excuse me, really excited to provide this update to the council and community on efforts, what we call Phase Two, in terms of work done by our consultants and by city staff, and by, based on input from the community. And so I wanted to just frame this a little bit relative to sort of the historical basis of how we arrived where we are, and, you know, what you're going to hear this evening. So there are some precedent for it. And, yeah, hopefully, there we go. Okay, so just kind of remind everyone that this, you know, this is not a process, just one moment in time, but this has been an ongoing process. And so in 2012, we had development of the Marina and Beach Park Development Plan. And I'm going to talk about that, talk about Phase One of the consultant study, design feasibility, which was done in 2017. 2017, we had a community open house aboard the Argosy boat to get input from the community. And then tonight, we have Phase Two of our consultant study relative to financial feasibility. So I just want to walk through those a little. So in 2012, the city initiated a Marina and Beach Park redevelopment process. And I can see Bill Lynn Scott sitting here, and I know he was involved in that at the time. I think Melissa Musser was our council liaison to that process. And what happened was, there was a lot of community participation. We had Burke Consultants were involved in writing the report. The group came up with a number of recommendations that parallel many of our current recommendations. Those include boutique hotel, mixed-use development focusing on retail and office, a stairway with an elevator connection to Cliff Avenue, the 223rd, a restaurant. And the focus at the time was on a long-term land lease with some consideration in the report of selling small portions of Marina land to encourage development. So the city formulated at that point and issued an RFP. And the response was, I would say, exceedingly poor from developers. And that's not to cast aspersions on anyone who responded, but I think the commonality of the responses was that everyone was willing to redevelop the Marina as long as the city paid for it. So that didn't go well. And in the end, in the end, based on that, the city did not move forward with any of the RFP responses. And a personal note on that is, when I started here in 2014, the first thing I ever did at the city, even before my start date, was come and sit down with our city attorney, with an attorney, and our city manager, and kind of review a proposal. And looking at the proposal, I couldn't understand why we were going to finance the development. And that was, that was the basis of response that we were getting. So to the degree that we have been able, we've built upon this earlier work, but there's a difference, and we're in a different place right now. So I just want to talk a minute about the current context. What has changed? And what's changed is that that was 2012, this is 2018, 2017, 2018. We have a different national macroeconomic circumstance relative to the Fed's commitment to get us out of the recession and to make the cost of capital relatively cheap. And so interest rates are low. The region has competitive advantage, and we'll see that. Robert and his team will address that as they go forward with their presentation. But we have competitive advantage relative to cost of land. There's been huge growth in the region and in South King County. We've about, have about 4,000 or 5,000 new jobs at the Business Park when all of that is fully employed. We had, you know, the opening of the Angle Lake Station. We had improvements at 24th, 28th roadway improvements to go all the way to the cargo area of Sea-Tac now from 216th. We initiated the Metro multimodal shuttle service as a pioneering service that Metro helped us with. We have transportation improvements. Light rail extension will go to Highline College into the south. We have a 509 gateway project that's going to connect 509 to I-5 and provide access to the, directly to the Port of Seattle. We have active development in the downtown. One of the best examples of that is a theater. And if you drive by the theater along Marine View, you can't tell anything's going on. If you drive down the alleyway behind the theater, you can see all the development in the world happening in there. They've got footings, and they're poured concrete, and they're just going gangbusters. We've had a lot of infrastructure investment, and I think Dan's going to talk about that in a minute, but we've also had investment in the public space. And we've looked at, and what you'll see tonight, is the concept of integration of the public space and infrastructure to establish development patterns. And I think one of the most important lessons that we've learned from working with our consultants has been the value of the public space. And it was really Joe Duzenberry who brought that up at our first meeting, kind of kickoff meeting, about how when the promenade was established down there, it was like the public knew that was theirs. And that has helped, and has been an ongoing dynamic, is the value of the public space. So we take that with great sort of attention as we move forward in this. And the city has taken many steps positively in the recent past, based on leadership of the council and an understanding of how we can proceed to invest in the infrastructure, to invest in public space, to invest in concept of amenities. So with that, I will stop. Probably everyone's happy. But I'll stop and turn it over to Dan to talk about the infrastructure and public space.
Good evening, council. One of the things, as Michael mentioned, is defining, and we've heard this as we've kind of gone through the development process, is really defining the public space. And that's what I wanted to talk for a few minutes about, some of our plans and things that we've already completed, and things that we're currently working on, and some of the future plans, and how all of our efforts in defining and developing the public space are kind of knitted together. And you'll hear more about this, you know, when Robert and his team do their presentation in a few minutes. We had a separate consultant kind of help us with some renderings here. And what was, one of the things that was really kind of striking was that, as you'll see later on in the presentation, the area of development that we're talking about is kind of concentrated in the same general area. Same conclusions are being reached by multiple development teams. So that's one element. I'm not going to really get into that, but I'm going to talk more about everything that's kind of going on. And this graphic conceptually describes the kind of the public investment, the public space. So, you know, it begins with the Van Gasken purchase that we're working on with, in partnership with Forterra. We should hear back in the next couple of weeks on our second grant relative to acquiring that property, working on future plans of improving the promenade on the beach park and access to the beach park. We're well into design on our North Bulkhead project and some of the pedestrian elements and urban design features associated with that. We've got some images here I'll show you of the, kind of a lighthouse and seating area kind of a thing that's on the corner. We're going to relocate the restroom from this corner here down to here. We'll have some concessions as part of that restroom. You know, of course, the existing promenade that's already completed along the frontage here, and then ultimately continuing that as we do the bulkhead work further south in the future, and looking at kind of a linear park down here. I'm going to show you some graphics of what that might look like and kind of how that might work. The whole idea is creating, you know, a walkable, pedestrian-scale kind of inviting environment all the way along the waterfront, all along the bulkhead, and into the beach park and connecting into the Des Moines Creek Trail and beyond. And, you know, ultimately, something else that we're working on is kind of a access to the breakwater. If we can get public access onto that breakwater, we can relieve ourselves of some of the financial obligations to the DNR that we have to pay, which is fairly significant. So in the future, that would be something else that we could look at doing. So with that, so this is kind of a conceptual graphic that shows how these fit together. On the next slide, I want to show, kind of to scale, what this might look like. It's kind of an ortho image, and this is kind of out quite a ways, but it shows conceptually how the linear park here might work with a, kind of the same width of the esplanade or promenade along the bulkhead here. Some Marina steps and potential development areas shown, just for graphical representation. But kind of continuing that promenade all the way around the new bulkhead and actually continuing as we replace that bulkhead along the beach park, straightening that out, and doing some, perhaps some habitat restoration here at the outfall of Des Moines Creek. And then looking at ways to kind of connect Overlook Park 2 with the Van Gasken property, and considering ways of kind of connecting that space, and ultimately tying all of this together with the, some of the things you'll hear about later. I'm not going to get into that. I'm not going to ruin the surprise. But what I want to do now is just kind of zoom in, if you can go to the next slide, please. And then I'm going to show you some, kind of some renderings of what, how some of this kind of begins to tie together. And so you'll see here, we're going to show you a rendering here of the Van Gasken overlook and kind of what this might look like with some steps and access to the beach. And you can kind of see here's where that relocated restroom and concessions might be with some urban design elements along that frontage. So let's take a look at that, if you go to the next slide. And so obviously, the Van Gasken house and parts of Overlook Park are shown here. And then, right now, there's, these properties are separated. We've got work that we're doing, some landscaping work. We're trying to plan on the Van Gasken property, but the idea is to kind of connect all of this space, as you'll see on this next rendering here on the next slide. This is just some conceptual ideas. There's a lot of stuff shown on here, just to kind of get the creative minds thinking. But again, trying to connect the space, not only between these parks, but as a walkable area between here and the Marina and the park, providing a connection to the Marina District itself. Obviously, something like this is, would take some doing and restructuring of access to some of the existing buildings here and kind of redoing some of the cul-de-sac and, you know, making sure that we're providing all the, you know, emergency vehicle access and things like that. But this is a concept that is something that we're looking at, at this part. But this gives you an idea of what could be possible.
Clarify that you're closing the street off. Was that correct?
Yeah, right now, Fifth Avenue would come, kind of comes down here and connects, and it's a really sharp turn that we're having some traffic issues with. And so this would kind of alleviate that, that particular issue. We also have kind of, sometimes there's some parking that happens up here that is kind of an issue on Fifth. So we're kind of working through some of those. This would kind of alleviate, alleviate that. On the next slide, here's a rendering concept of what kind of the entrance and connection from the beach park to the Marina, and something that we're currently working on. And so, you know, right now, the existing bulkhead doesn't look anything like this. It's really jagged, kind of cuts in and out. One of the thoughts would be if we, as we rebuild this bulkhead, if we kind of put some steps down to the beach, and, you know, this, when the tide comes in, it'll be all the way up onto the top, but, you know, so that this becomes part of the bulkhead, but also provides water access. You know, looking at an activity center in this area where we might have a playground or a water feature or something like that, you know, something that would be really inviting and connecting the space. And again, you know, to do this kind of work will take some pretty heavy lifting permit-wise, but we, I think we have some things that we can offer to the DNR and Department of Ecology in getting some of these kind of permits approved to do, to do that work in the shoreline. But, so it's kind of a conceptual idea of what that might look like. And up above, you see the Van Gasken overlook and what that might, how that kind of fits. And then kind of working around, you know, as we rebuild this bulkhead on the North Bulkhead, if you go to the next slide, you'll see, you know, kind of this urban design feature place for, you know, walkers to hang out. And, you know, this is just one kind of concept that's being considered, kind of a lighthouse feature right at the end of the fishing pier, something like this. And then the next slide, you'll see kind of a concept of the relocated restroom. We've kind of run this through some public outreach, and we had a four, about four or five different kind of concepts. And this is kind of the one that has landed on. And the next slide shows a couple of different angles and kind of what that might look like with some concession on-- with some concession on on the backside, something like that. Then kind of keep going and through the slides here, you'll see, you know, this some of this has already been completed. So we've got the existing area in front of the Harbor Masters office and and the existing Bulkhead work that's already been done, which is so it's kind of continuing this all along the north lot. You know, as Ken mentioned, you know, the we've already got some commercial work going here on the marina floor with the quarter deck, and we'll see that opening soon and looking forward to having access to, you know, food and drink as part of your enjoyment of the the marina area. And then the the next slide here is kind of looking south along the promenade and the esplanade area. And the idea is to kind of continue this as we move south through the through the marina towards, you know, Anthony's Homeport. And the next slide, you'll kind of see that, you know, right now, those improvements end right about in here where the travel lift is. And so the idea is to continue this as we can replace this Bulkhead in the future, widening out that walking space and making that more inviting. And as we do that, we want to consider looking at providing more of this linear park. And you're going to hear more about that in the next presentation. But I'm going to show you kind of conceptually what this might look like on the next slide here. You know, right now, we've got two two drivelanes essentially, one up against the Bulkhead and what's traditionally known as Dock Avenue on both sides. And as we were Scott and I were thinking about this, maybe that's not the best configuration. And maybe there's another way to kind of look at how we can circulate traffic through through the area. And I'm going to show you a diagram of that. But here's kind of the idea of the rebuilt tenants restroom and but still have maybe access from for the public on one side for some public restrooms, but still have that tenant restroom that's that front center. And then providing, you know, art, pedestrian scale lighting, other types of seating and things that are that you see kind of in the current Bulkhead work and the esplanade and that's on the north end. And just kind of continue that all the way down. And on this next slide, you'll see kind of conceptually how the traffic would work. So you'd kind of you would come up one aisle and down back down the other, up, down, down the other. And you would kind of eliminate the idea of of having this kind of throughput on this side. And we would take advantage, I think we've got about thirty six feet in in most areas and sometime and somewhere there's more. So we're able to kind of widen out that park and provide some more pedestrian scale amenities. It really enhances that experience. And you'll see kind of on this next slide, kind of a rendering, what that could look like all the way down towards Anthony's. So what we wanted to show with this and kind of a lead in to the presentation you're about to hear next is there is a lot that we're already doing. There's a lot we've already done. There's a lot of things that we're currently working on with the Bulkhead, the purchase of of the Van Gasken property and working towards kind of completing that public space and making that a public investment in that public in that public space that will help define and drive the development activity on the marina floor. So that's my presentation.
Thanks, Dan. And, you know, that the concept that the infrastructure investment continues all the way up to the theater, undergrounding utilities in the alleyway, activating the alleyway, just looking for ways to integrate and coordinate the development with the public space and infrastructure. So with that, it's a pleasure, as always, to turn this over to Robert and his team. We thank you for all your work. We've enjoyed working with you on this phase. Take it away.
Yeah, let me just make a few introductions here.
We should make sure the microphones are working.
Yeah. My name is Robert Holmes, and this is our second round of work with you, and it's been a mutual admiration society here. We've enjoyed a lot. Adam Seidman, who is with the Concord Group, worked with me on the first go around, and I'm pleased to be working with him again. And Adam's going to go through so we can get a lot of material and want to get through it efficiently. And I'll I'll, you know, chime in as well, but I wanted to introduce Jeff Kovell from Skylabs. We added Jeff during the work as we began to zero in on this concept of this connector from the downtown to the waterfront floor and the creation of development parcels that would be ignited or cause to happen because of this of this proposed public improvement. But in doing it, we wanted to we wanted to test that a little bit more. So we we worked with some geotech people. We brought in Jeff, who did some not design per se, but some concept design. And then we retained a cost estimator just so we could frame tonight in terms of an order of magnitude. But we're very excited about where we're at and have enjoyed taking many of you on various tours and things like that to kind of get us all aligned on kind of the vocabulary and 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 the business of real estate development. So with that, we'll we'll start it.
Please. So so the way that we have the agenda set up is pretty similar to how we we went through it on Phase One, where we'd like to go over very quickly some of the background in terms of what our scope of work was, review the key findings, and then importantly, get into the development strategies and and next steps, and then open it up for an open discussion and Q and A. So so Robert introduced us. So yeah, but I mean, I think what maybe you didn't mention, Robert, is I mean, this is a multidisciplinary team right here. So Robert's got, I don't want to say how many years of experience, a lot of years of experience.
A few.
Doing doing development regionally and nationally, and in certain cases internationally. He brings the real world experience of how do you get a project done? I I work with a firm called the Concord Group. Our expertise is doing market analysis work and working hand in hand with private sector clients and public sector clients and trying to understand what's possible. Jeff's team is is regionally and in certain cases nationally renowned for some really amazing design work. So you have planning, architecture, maybe I don't want to misspeak on you, Jeff, but you have a really interesting design element here. And and it's important for it was important for our team to actually get get kind of new and creative ideas in this next phase of 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 work. And and in terms of the scope of work, there were there were a number of different things we looked at, actually, a lot of moving parts going into this phase. So one was just simply update what we had done, right? There was a kind of that aspect. We had last done work, we got in front of the council and the community last May, so May twenty seventeen, that was the last time we were here. So part of this is let's refresh, let's make sure that the findings are still consistent. Anything major has changed, et cetera. A major thing that came out of last the Phase One and certainly in the discussions following with the city was an interest in developing further this concept of the steps. And so part of the phase here was was diving deeper into that and understanding what how feasible or not feasible is that. And we looked at that from many different perspectives, including the financial feasibility, the design feasibility, and the integration with private development. We also looked at the financial feasibility of developing private development in conjunction with with doing the steps, and then wanted to identify a strategy for what do we do? What can we do in a Phase One here, right? Because there's a this is a this is a very, I mean, this is a pretty significantly sized marina, right? There's a lot of stuff that could be done here, also a lot of stuff that couldn't be done or that you may not want to do. But it's a it's a big parcel. It's important to break it down into pieces. And certainly, from a development standpoint, I think, Robert, you know, you've drilled this into my brain, knowing you for about ten years, that, you know, showing success, and you guys are already doing it with the stuff that Dan went over, for example, but showing continued success is really important, especially in the development world. Developers like to see stuff happening. They like to see success. It will drive interest in the area. So having a successful Phase One is important. So so some of the key takeaways from our first phase were that there there's an opportunity to develop here, right? So there there are different land uses here. There certainly are strong regional trends to develop things like residential and hotel. And we talked about that last time. You're seeing it right now. And you saw the the Tuck Willa high rise go up. In fact, they built hotel and apartments, kind of an interesting mixed use project and by far the tallest building in the in this part of the of the King County. You have a number of new hotels as well in, you know, in Sea-Tac and bleeding into this area as well that are either on the planning table or already under construction. And some have been constructed since actually our last meeting. The other takeaways included the, you know, the understanding the constraints here. So building height is a is a major constraint, right? We're basically looking at about thirty five feet. And, you know, a big part of that is not trying to impact view corridors, whether it's from citizens that are living on top of it or from public view corridors, right? So the the building height restriction is definitely something that we, you know, is a very serious consideration from our from our standpoint then and now in terms of how do we how do we, you know, what can we do with that? And then another big takeaway was certainly this potential to incorporate public amenities into development plans. Probably when I looked at my notes from that twenty seventeen meeting, probably the biggest word that I wrote and circled a bunch of times, and it was it came from actually you guys on the council, was this desire for connectivity. The the word connectivity was just repeated a lot. And, you know, if you obviously you live here or if you visit here, it it can be it can be hard to get down to the marina. And it can be hard to know that it's even there. I mean, I've spoken with people that are that should know this area that are in the real estate world, and they don't know that there's a marina here. So there's an issue of, you know, that certainly there's a perception issue maybe, but there's also a connectivity issue. And so this idea of this opportunity to enhance the connectivity between the marina and downtown and beach park and all these other great things that you guys are already doing or they're already planned was was certainly a big thing that came out of the last the last phase. We came here and and came up with some different concepts, right? This was kind of a very, very high level look at what was possible. And so we looked at a baseline scenario, a north concentration, doing development on both sides of the marina, for example. What what came out of it is that there was a lot of consensus, you know, around the table for for focusing on the the northern area. And Dan was saying, I mean, there's definitely been and Michael was saying as well, from previous studies, there's been pretty consistent feedback that this northern area around the Harbor Master House is is the area to start. And so we use that as our as kind of our go for this for this phase, right? Let's let's focus there and let's see what's possible. So a number of things have happened since that that May meeting. So there have been a number of tours. This included or this has included Robert and Michael taking the city council on tours of Seattle to see what has been developed, what's possible at different scales, right? How do you connect things in? There have also been developer tours that Robert and Michael have and city staff have done to bring developers here and educate them in terms of what's been happening and also get their feedback, importantly, get their feedback in terms of what what do they see that they like? What are things that are challenging? There was an open house on the Argosy that that happened last October, and a lot of great community feedback there. And and then we kicked off our work this past basically early spring or late winter, depending on what you think February is. Certainly, also in that time, there's been a lot of things happening. So the Business Park, Phase Two officially, right, is FAA. That opened, Phase Four opened, all fully leased. I mean, that by the way, that is, I mean, that's a big pat on the back for your community here. That's incredible. That's just absolutely incredible. The the shuttle service opened. So a lot of interesting things are have happened in the in the interim that we we from our standpoint had to consider also in terms of what what that means. So this this these are just some some very high level slides to just put us in the context of where we are here, right? Because when you drive around, I mean, it strikes me when I when I drive around here that it sounds, you know, unless you're going into Seattle a lot or Bellevue a lot, you can lose sight of what's actually happening in the core here and how that impacts the, let's say, the South King County region, right? Because besides that project in Tuck Willa, we're not seeing high rises here. We're not seeing a ton of cranes, right? But the 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 fact of the matter is, is you're in what's rated the number one crane city or crane metro really in the whole country. It's been so the Seattle area has, you know, had the most cranes of any city in the U.S. like for, I don't know, two, three years running, which is pretty nuts. I think they lost a spot once, you know, and then regained it. So there's over like sixty cranes up right now in in the Seattle area. One of the strongest housing markets in the country. And the 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 home prices, I mean, you don't you don't need a consultant to come here and tell you that, right? Home values are up. If you own, it's great. If you're looking for a house, I can tell you it can be really hard. But it's also potentially an advantage here, maybe not for this site, but certainly for this for this submarket in this region, right? The people can come here and find value. And that applies not just to housing, but to other land uses as well. It's this Seattle and the Seattle metro is also one of the top real estate investment areas in the whole country. I can tell you, so we we do work, our firm does work with developers and investors all over the country. And we've had so there's been so much interest, both from locals or regional players as well as national players in this market. And it's just it's built to a level that I, I mean, really, it's never been seen in this market before. One of the fastest growing economies and and continues to be. So the the metro over the past four years has added something like fifty to sixty thousand new jobs. I think since twenty eleven, about half a million new jobs, new jobs have been created in in this region. That's pretty incredible. And and in migration has been strong. So it's all of these factors are actually making, you know, making people move to this to the region. And as I mentioned, this area, so let me just see if I can get a pointer here. So if this is city of Seattle on the outline and we're down here, so this is, you know, this is just home prices, median listing home prices, you know, this is East Side, right? Bellevue, Mercer Island, right? Deep red. But but home values here are, you know, basically about half of what they are on average in Seattle. So right now, the median single family home price in Seattle, for example, is about eight hundred thousand dollars. In our submarket here, which really would stretch from here down, is about it's about four hundred thousand dollars. It's a huge, huge difference. And that dynamic also plays for apartment rents. It also plays for office rents. It also plays to a certain extent for to retail rents. So you see that dynamic playing out, and it also impacts land values as well. The the interesting thing here in in this in this area is we have relatively good access to 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 the major employment nodes, right? So you certainly we have light rail, you have good free relatively good freeway access. And something that struck me, one time I flew in from Portland to here, is it's like an eight minute, you know, Uber drive from the airport to to here, which is which really is incredible. And I think for a lot of people that live here, it gets kind of lost on you how how incredible that really is. I can tell you that from for businesses, especially businesses looking to locate here, that can be a huge advantage. And I'm sure you're seeing it for at the Business Park, for example. So those are some that's some regional context, just to put kind of put the marina and and really this area into the regional context. Locally, as Michael mentioned already, a lot of new jobs being created here. I mean, just the the scale of this relative to the population here really is pretty staggering, right? The amount of new jobs, I mean, what's the population, thirty thousand, something like in that that order of magnitude? So you're talking about over ten, twelve percent, you know, increase. Not all these people are going to live here, but that's a that's a big, big number. And, you know, nationally, you'd be hard pressed to find communities of this size doing that. The shuttle service is 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 very interesting. Apparently, it's performing up to to what was expected. And importantly, isn't is a is a kind of a missing link, right? People talk about that that last mile or the missing links for transit. I mean, this is a really interesting solution, right, to to bring people in and out of downtown to get them to to the light rail stop. I'm going to try to take it tomorrow and see see how it goes. You you also locally have the potential redevelopment of a very major piece of property here. And a lot of development in and around downtown, right? Now, some of these will happen, some of these won't according to plan, right? I mean, there's a lot of, you know, when you look at development activity, not everything is going to always happen according to plan. But what we see here is a lot of stuff, a lot of interest right here in the core, right? And we know that the theater is is happening right now. So community input, back in October twenty seventeen, over two hundred attendees came to this. Michael, city staff, city council, I believe, were all there. And and from from all that we've heard, was it was a really great event and 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 had really good responses. One of the important things that came out of this was, you know, all the community and all you guys probably in here came and put stickies on on these boards. And the stickies represent a desire for different land uses or different things in and around the marina and downtown. And what what became clear when we looked at this is that there's support really for all different types of land uses, but certainly things like an all-weather market, casual dining and brew pub kind of rose to the top. I mean, those are clear winners in terms of what people want. Also, I think I think important to note is where everything's clustered on the marina floor. I mean, literally, this is probably two or three stickers deep in some in some parts, right? Because people couldn't find the space and they just kind of stuck it on top of it. Because people couldn't find the space and they just kind of stuck it on top of other people's stickers. But, there's a very clear clustering right around here, around the Harbor Masterhouse and the north end of the marina. And following this, also again, there were tours of city council to get additional input, right, from the community. As we mentioned, developer input. So, I think about twelve developers came through. And so, some of the feedback that Robert and Michael were able to get included certainly this idea of a public connector, like the steps or something like that would be, could be a catalyst, right, to interest developers in the area. There's certainly, right now, readily available interest for development of residential, right? That's, you know, that's a function of what's going on regionally, right? And also in terms of what can be financed. There's potential interest from a hotel developer, looking at a potential, a new concept of an inn, a brew pub and some mixed-use developers also had interest. So, some really, some really good signals, right? I mean, it's, you know, we're not, the goal here was not to get anything confirmed, right? Or any plans going, it's really just to generate that first round of interest and introduce people and then get feedback. Anything we're missing, right? Any kind of blind spots that we have as a team in terms of how we're approaching and looking at this?
One of the things those tours reminded me of is that, you know, part of getting people here of the caliber that we got, be they an inn operator or brew pub operator, they all were overwhelmed by what they saw. And, you know, Michael is not a bad salesman either, right? And he's a good tour guide as well. But, I mean, that, and so, that's part of this. And then layering on more and more of the story as it begins to emerge, it, all of this leads to interest from the types of people that you want to develop here and the types of tenants that you want. You know, it's about development, but it's really about a quality of development that aligns with what you want to do publicly.
And also, it's about having a story, right? I mean, so having a story that attracts people, right? So, right now, developers in the region and around the country have a lot of sites they're looking at too, right? Some are on the water, some aren't. But, there's, there's, it actually can be hard sometimes to get developers' attention. And so, getting someone to come in and take that first look is actually a big deal. And I can tell you that based on experience with seeing Robert do this in other locations, it's yielded results before where developers have gone from those tours to then going on another tour, having further conversations and eventually, in certain cases, actually developing properties on these sites. So, in conjunction with speaking with developers, we also performed a high-level market analysis, looking at trends in the region. And the trends, basically, this is very similar, very similar summary to what we had in Phase One, which is that there's very strong trends in the residential market. There's also strong trends right now in the hotel market here. There's kind of, I would say, moderate trends regionally in terms of office and retail. And when we say strong, moderate, very strong, it's looking at things like rents and sales prices, occupancy rates, developer demand, things like that. We also looked at what's, what the current supply is in the market here. Basically, there's very little new product here, right? So, there's not a lot of examples for us to point to in Des Moines and even really in this sub-market, right? If we go from even like South Seattle all the way down to Federal Way, there's just not a lot of new development to point to. And the ones that are tend to be fairly small-scale, although you see a couple bigger projects right now, for example, in Kent, right? And maybe Burien, right, as well. We looked at demand drivers and also look at the pipeline, right? There's not really a lot of supply coming online as far as we can tell, except for basically hotels. There's a lot of hotels in the pipeline, but the quality and character and location of those is very different than I think what we would see here. So, most of the hotels that are in the pipeline are right around the airport. They're all mostly going to a very similar type of user there and would be a pretty different developer, concept and crowd that you would look at here. So, even though there's a lot of supply in that realm, it's not really probably that competitive here. It's certainly something a developer would look at, but it's, you're not going to get that type of hotel developer, like a Hilton probably, that's going to want to be near the airport, coming right here to the marina. So, site opportunities, right? So, that's like market stuff, talking to developers, getting community input. When we put our thinking caps on in terms of what would interest us as developers and also as analysts on this, certainly the water. And, I mean, duh, right? It's like you got water here. But, really, if you take a step back and you think about how many places in the region and beyond even our South King County, almost anywhere, if you take a step back and go to the whole Seattle Metro, where can you locate right now on vacant parcels on the water? There just aren't that many, right? I mean, you have Expedia moving to, from Bellevue to Seattle in order to get a campus feel, right? To get more water access and views. So, certainly a very, you know, very in-demand for them. There's just not a lot of places actually that you can go and have actually good water views and access in the region. So, views certainly play into it. A big advantage here, potentially, is the amount of surface parking that exists here. And we'll talk about this in a few slides from now. But, you know, you have, you have a lot of, you have a lot of parking right here. And from a developer's standpoint, building parking is very expensive. So, the question is, are there things that you can incentivize development here by, you know, sharing or having a strategy around sharing parking spaces, right? The fact that it's a large parcel and its contiguous ownership is also potentially appealing, right? You have one, you know, one owner that can control the destiny of the marina floor. And if you're a developer, that means you're also talking to one group or one person. And certainly the proximity to things, right? And again, the potential for connectivity into the different areas here. So, we took a map, we looked at what was possible here and we really focused in on this area right here. So, Harbor Masterhouse is right here. This is 223rd. And what we, what our group working with the city came to conclude is that there is a logical spot to put a set of steps right here. Basically, serving to connect 223rd down to the marina floor and potentially, potentially having the opportunity to then have a couple parcels on either side of it that would be created. We also looked at what, you know, kind of building off of what Dan said and certainly what Michael said as well, what other kind of amenities could be possible here, right? So, the Overlook House, right, that was purchased, what, last year, Michael? Up here, you know, that is an amenity. You know, Dan had some really great imagery around what's possible there. Certainly, this Greenway concept and connecting more, you know, basically down south more, down towards Anthony's, is a big deal. Doing something here, right, around, maybe there's some green space even around here. Certainly, this boardwalk and Waters Edge concept, you know, trails, whether it's connecting in here to the trail, trail up to the house. So, a lot of opportunities actually that are kind of around this site for other amenities. And then here's where the steps could fit in, right, right here. They really kind of form a, they really become pretty central, actually, in terms of the concept plan here. So, this is, this is the zone that we focused on. This is, we kind of put our blinders on, we said, "We're going to look here and see what's possible." So, why build the steps, right? Because, I mean, there's, you know, you could have a lot of, you know, maybe a lot of reasons why you wouldn't want to build anything. But, if we want to say, why do we want to build the steps? I mean, this is, these are the reasons that we feel pretty strongly about as a group. First, it connects the waterfront with downtown, as we discussed. Secondly, and maybe not so clearly, but it's a public amenity. And depending on how it's designed, can be a true public amenity. Not just stairs. It can be something really, really pretty amazing. It can be an attractor for both locals as well as out-of-town folks. From our standpoint, also importantly, it can be a catalyst for private investment and development. So, seeing, I mean, so developers seeing that something's happening, that the city is investing in the area can be a huge signal to the, hey, something's going on here. And could be integrated with other community-desired aspects, right? So, the things that people want in the community, right? The market and, you know, the all-weather market and the brew pub and the coffee and those kind of things. Some of those things left to their own devices just won't happen, right? They're not just going to appear, right? So, we have to think about how do we make those appear, right? So, by doing this, can we create development parcels, for example, in conjunction with this that would then lend themselves to development of something like that, right? You can imagine, you know, having a stairs that had some connection with a, with a, you know, a bar that has an outdoor patio that goes onto the stairs and has indoor/outdoor space, right? And starts to flow into the spaces there. That becomes pretty appealing to a tenant or a brew pub or a restaurant owner. So, I'm going to actually pass this off to Jeff just for a minute to just talk through a little bit about the process that we went through as a team and especially his team went through, kind of trying to figure out what a design here could be.
Yeah, hello. Yeah, we've been really excited to be engaged on this. There's so much opportunity here and I think, you know, I guess where I would sort of take off is a little bit about this idea of the view and the idea of the stair being more than a stair. And we really saw the opportunity for essentially a terraced park, is how I would sort of frame it. And one of the advantages of that is as you obviously step up on each terrace, your view gets better and better. So, you know, it's not so much that you're just trying to move through and connect from downtown to the marina, but that actual connection becomes that true amenity because it's this terrace viewing platform essentially. What we did was really just tried a number of different approaches of integrating adjacent development and looking at a number of different strategies to the stair. And I think we probably did, you know, six or seven concepts initially of whether it was a series of ramps, you know, how big would a ramp be versus a stair? Does it need an elevator? You know, those types of things. Where we, I think, collectively landed was this idea of this terraced sort of park essentially that would, depending on the integration with the adjacent development, would either have its own elevator element. And the reason why an elevator makes sense is just from a footprint point of view. This is about a forty-two-foot fall, so it's quite a long ramp. It's a, you know, some hundreds of feet of ramp if we were to go down that road. We actually, we have drawings of this.
It'd be a big skateboard ramp, what it would be.
Yeah, I mean, it could be quite cool, you know, almost like the Seattle Sculpture Park sort of scenario. But, I think we really wanted to keep this North Star of sort of maximizing the potential for adjacent commercial development as a partnership to trigger this into being. So, we landed on this concept and I think what's important for me to explain, I guess, is that this stair really needs to go through a thorough design process with more involvement. I think we really wanted to flush out, you know, let's get a vision on the table. Let's get something that we can price. Let's get something that we know we can build. And let's get something that we can really start to plug the data out of into the development documentation and analysis. So, there are a million ways we could have designed the stair. We sort of just put a stick in the sand and said, "Okay, let's run with this. We like, we like how it's looking." And part of it is that the terracing was tying in to the potential floor levels of the buildings on either side. And we really see that as an incredible opportunity. You know, there's the potential that the elevator would just move into one of those buildings, which could also make it more efficient and solve some security issues and some other things. So, that, we've looked at it in both ways. What we've essentially done is isolated the stair and said, "Okay, let's price", essentially put enough documentation on the table where we can look at this from a cost point of view. I think we're going to share that in a moment. But then, you know, we have also a number of versions of how it could integrate with adjacent development as a way to help inspire those discussions with the partner developers. And then, as that was developing, we sort of started spending a little bit more time on the overall site. And, you know, I think one of the things, we've done some work in Hood River on the waterfront. We've done a master plan, are just finishing some buildings there. And I think we were just talking today about some of the things, some of the lessons that you could take away from the success there because their waterfront's thriving with jobs, with breweries, with food and other businesses, manufacturing, but also a lot of recreation. They really invested in this sort of park and this playground that ended up really becoming the catalyst for, it basically created the clientele, you know, that started supporting these businesses and then the businesses grew. So, we, on the overall aerial plan, have sort of identified some opportunities to expand the green space. So, you'll see just, I guess, I guess on the aerial, do you have the aerial handy? There's sort of just two key aspects. One is that the building that we're showing could potentially have a green roof. And that could be the potential terminus of sort of the green corridor down to downtown. You have gravity, so it could have, you know, street planters and whatnot. And that water could sort of flow right down. And then ultimately, this could land in a large green space that could become that sort of community park. And so, we're really seeing this as all working together as the seed of future phases.
You know, just on this, these are examples and some, and the city council saw a couple of them. On Harbor Steps, the public garage was integrated into the project. And it was a, it was a good solution because it was, it was integrated and it allowed smooth access, more interesting access than having an external elevator. In the Pike Place Market, something was done similar. So, in an ideal world, you would have private development happening at the same time you made your public investment. And the two would be, you know, isolated because, but they would be integrated. And in both examples in Seattle are that terraced concept where, you know, you stop and you pause if you want to have a cup of coffee or if you're picking a kid up from a daycare or if you're officing or whatever. And it just makes it much more interesting space by having more people.
And I think that vitality, I guess, is also, you know, a major attractor to things like employers, right? And bringing in that office tenancy.
Yeah, so appreciate that, kind of that background. So, the idea here was to get a concept, basically conceptual drawings, but get them good enough that we could get pricing. I mean, that was a pretty important, you know, aspect of what we wanted to do here. Because when we left off of Phase One, we, there was interest in looking at this and, you know, we just, you know, we were talking to Michael and Steph, we're like, "We don't know what this costs, right? We don't know what it actually would cost to build and can we, could you sell enough stuff here to actually pay for it, for example, right? Or could you, you know, whatever the strategy would be." And so, that was a major kind of undercurrent of what we undertook. So, now let's talk about that. Let's talk about development strategies and what's possible here, right? Given some of those findings. So, definitely the issues to consider as we think about a development strategy here, this is very similar to what we talked about in Phase One, right? But, you need to, we need to consider, or any, you know, any strategy here or plan needs to consider the city's goals, right? Things around public access, having a working marina, having a B revenue generating, however we want to define that ultimately. Mix of uses, human scale came out as a very big one at multiple stages. Assets for the community and certainly a destination location. And I think that can be for locals as well as for non-locals. There's, you know, there's certainly the aspect of market-based demand, both today and in the future. Like, what will people actually do, not just what we hope they do? What are the constraints and strengths of the site, phasing and timing, early-phase successes, which is really what we're focused on today? And then getting, ultimately getting enough critical mass here to activate this area. Because, you know, again, just plopping down one, I mean, even if you got a coffee shop that was awesome down at the marina floor, like, that's not probably enough activity, right? To make people keep coming back and, you know, make them want to go there all the time and at different times of the day and different times of the year. It's really about having a mix of uses and having enough, you know, as you say, Robert, heat down at a place like this to generate interest and continual activity. So, the framework that we're using for the development strategy here is the following. So, first, you got to create a vision. And that's really what we're all trying to work towards today, next phase, et cetera. We're really trying to create this vision and identify the early-phase focus, which is I think what really what we've nailed on, you know, what we've kind of trying to nail down now. Then it's determining how to best leverage the city assets, coming up with things like parking strategies and other things that can help incentivize private development. And then ultimately, also trying to identify partners, maybe identify tenants, right? Developers, et cetera. And so, if the vision is doing something like this, it's like, how do we get there, right? Like, you know, there's a Greenway, there's all this stuff. So, first, we're, again, we're going to focus here, okay? Steps, create some, maybe create some parcels here and see what that means. So, if we take the steps that Jeff's team drew up, right? Based on kind of an iter, really a months-long iterative process of going back and forth with the team, with the city staff and trying to understand what, you know, really what could work here. I think what was really exciting is that, you know, you could, so you could build the steps independently of doing anything else, right? They basically created steps in the current version that can be built on their own. You don't have to build anything adjacent to them. It would maybe look a little weird on the sides, but I'm sure your team could make that look better. But the idea really is hopefully ultimately that it actually is built either in conjunction with or would help catalyze and incentivize development around it. And what was exciting certainly for us to see is how, like really what that could look and feel like here. I mean, these are just, what, these are three stories, right? This conforms to the zoning. Yeah, I mean, the design is not what's the focus, but it's like the height is kind of the right scale in terms of what would be allowed. You know, this is use-independent, right? We're not trying to say, oh, this is a certain use right now. We're just saying, what really, could something fit here and could you integrate it? And, you know, and what does that mean? So, Jeff's team took the drawings that they had that were more detailed and kind of more schematic, right? Than what we just showed. They took them to a cost estimator and the cost estimator then priced those out, right? This was an important step for us to understand what is, what does a design like that mean from the steps perspective? And so, we looked at an option without an elevator and an option with an elevator. And the idea of looking at it without the elevator is that maybe the elevator could be built in with future private development or in conjunction with private development, I should say. So, the steps maybe don't have to incorporate an elevator into them because it's a pretty big swing or delta in the pricing if you build an elevator. So, when you tack on thirty percent on soft costs onto the original cost estimate, you get something in the range of two and a half to three million dollars to build the stairs without an elevator and around three and a half to four million dollars with the elevator. You know, that's more or less an all-in price to build those stairs, right? Given the current design. So, those stairs create opportunity for private development, right? So, here are those stairs. They occupy about twelve thousand square feet of land. So, only about, what, a quarter acre or so of land gets taken up to build those stairs. And then, on either side of it, you could have development parcels. And so, on the, we're calling this parcel A right here, you get about eighteen thousand square feet of land. And here, it's, this is pretty flexible because you could have a smaller development parcel. You could have bigger, you could have even bigger, kind of depends. But the idea here is we settled somewhere in the middle, around thirteen thousand square foot piece of land. So, if you took the zoning, the current zoning allowance for how much you can build on that land, it gets around eighty thousand square feet of developable space, right? If you did thirty-five feet tall, wooden block views and potentially, hopefully, you could integrate them into designing the development of the steps. So, given that you create these parcels here by building the steps, what does that mean? Like what are the different development strategies to then deal with those parcels, right? So, one is to, you could sell a specific parcel, right? So, right now, the most of this land here is, as you can see on this aerial, this is mostly just boat storage. And I think there's maybe a couple parking spaces here. But, I mean, there's not, besides this boat storage, there's really not much here. So, and you're talking about under an acre right now in total, about twenty-nine acres. This is kind of the most cut and dry way to deal with a developer, right? I mean, they're going to come in, they, something's for sale, the developer comes, they're going to buy it. There's a price, they agree on it, or you guys agree on it. Those sales proceeds can help pay for the steps or other amenities you guys want. The ground lease is another option. I know that was considered back in 2012 and certainly it's something we've been talking about continuously really since then. You know, from our perspective and our experience, it's likely to reduce developer interest, not eliminate it, but reduce it. There are just some developers that will have no interest in that, right? They want to be, they want fee simple ownership. They don't want to have to deal with a, you know, ninety-nine year or whatever the land lease terms are going to be. Some land uses are, it's not that uncommon for us, or like hotels, for example. It's pretty typical. And sometimes offices you can find on land leases as well. I think the Creek Park is on a land lease, the business park. There's a lot of different options, can get complicated, but certainly the payments there can also help offset the cost here, right? So, you could tie the payments for the land lease maybe to debt service, right? And pay off the debt service over time. Public-private partnership, it really could, it really could be either of these. But the idea here is that rather than just selling a parcel or leasing a parcel, the city and maybe the port or whoever else really gets into a partnership with the private developer. And the reason that the city would have interest in doing that is it makes something like this probably a lot more interesting, a lot more feasible. And certainly a lot of cost savings too for all the parties, right? If you build the steps and don't build anything around them, there's, you know, that's not as efficient, right? So, someone could come in here and actually have a lot of efficiencies with looking at this thing holistically and working together with the city and partners to make this thing happen. So, not all developers will have interest in a public-private partnership. It's a, can be, also can be pretty complicated. And they just may not have that attention span to want to deal with it. But the city brings advantages, right? So, in a partnership, the city has land in this case, regulatory authority, bonding capacity, other advantages as well, but those are three kind of major ones that we can think of. Private developers certainly bring their expertise in getting things financed, built and done, right? So, it can be a win-win when done properly. So, we, in terms of what the land, potential land values would be here?
Just one comment to follow up the previous slide. You know, I think the thing, the thing with public-private partnerships is that, as we were talking in the beginning of setting the development pattern and establishing how the development looks, public-private partnerships with cooperative basis make it easier for a development to fit kind of what that cycle or what that phasing looks like from the city side. I mean, it's just one more way to work in a cooperative manner.
The goal was to integrate the steps, we call that, in with private development. That would, that would, I would lean toward that public-private partnership just because there's lots of give and take and you'd want to be very sure of what you were getting. And the best way to, usually one of the best ways is to be right in their shoulder shoulder as a partner. There's lots of examples. I mean, Woodinville is underway and their Civic Plaza is going to be done by a private developer as part of that partnership. So, there's examples that you could look at and study.
I think in this case also, there's quite a bit of space underneath the terracing of the steps. And I think that's one of the things that makes it more attractive is we're sort of building this thing up in the air, so to speak. So, it's just an opportunity that could be taken advantage of.
Yeah, you know, I mean, frankly, there's going to be things that our team and the city staff have not thought of, that a private developer is going to come in and take a fresh approach when it's their money and they have to figure out how to finance it. They're going to be creative and they're also going to, you know, they also oftentimes are just creative naturally. And so, you know, a lot of times I've seen projects that when a partnership happens, it really can create something a lot better than what was originally envisioned. You know, I would imagine something like this is, I mean, this is, you know, for a small parcel, this is actually pretty complicated, right? You know, these steps and these parcels to the side and, you know, where do you park and all these things? So, it's like, you know, private developer could actually bring a really interesting vision, I think, or, you know, maybe some creativity to the table as well. So, if we go to this, if we have one side of the equation, which is, okay, here's what the steps as currently envisioned cost, right? It's like, call it somewhere between two and a half and, you know, a little over three and a half million, depending on how you frame it. What's the other side of the equation, right? Like how much could we get for land here, right, in different scenarios? And so, that was kind of our next task. So, what we did is we looked at, we looked at land sales in the region, but they're not really great gauges for what's possible here. They certainly are things that help us understand what's going on. And certainly, if you talk to a broker, you know, they would point to, you know, that property down the road sold for this many dollars per land square foot or, you know, whatever the land was going to be built, it could be this many dollars per, you know, per office square foot or something like that. But what we really like to do in a case like this where it's a fairly unique parcel, and there are not a lot of good land comps, is do a land residual analysis. Essentially, we take a bunch of inputs and we back out what the land could be bought for from a developer, given different like return scenarios. So, essentially, we say, okay, if it's going to cost you this much to build something and you could sell it as a developer or lease it out for this much, how much could you afford to pay for the land? That basically is kind of a simple way to put it. But this is a, this is a pretty standard way that appraisers will look at land values. We do it a lot, again, especially in cases where there are not maybe good land comps. So, we did both. We looked at land comps in the region. We certainly looked at land comps even closer in areas to understand what the values are potentially here versus closer in areas in Seattle. And then ran land residual analysis based on a series of assumptions. And so, again, one strategy is to sell a specific parcel, right? So, land values and the value of the parcel depends on a lot of factors. So, first and foremost is land use, right? Very important factor. So, is it going to be a hotel or is it going to be, you know, a retail center? And then the resulting lease or sales values of those land uses. Certainly, what's possible to build on the land based on zoning and other constraints has major implications on land value. So, if someone could go onto a parcel and build twenty stories, you would assume they could pay more than building four stories, right? They can just build more stuff on that same parcel. The construction costs for different land uses, as well as where we are today and in the future, is a major, major factor. This is becoming a big deal and a big problem actually for a lot of developers in the region and in fact, a lot of areas in the country where construction costs are just getting so high that they can't make projects pencil. And, you know, given that landowners still want to get what they want, it makes a lot of projects not challenging to work, I should say. Parking and how you make parking happen is a major factor in terms of land values, investor interest and then certainly market norms and trends. So, depending on the resulting densities, the land uses that we consider here, we would project they would yield somewhere between, on the low end of nine hundred thousand dollars to about two point nine million dollars per acre, okay? Per land acre. And you can see that that can vary quite a bit. So, sorry, this is actually for the part, not the per acre, but for the actual parcel sizes. But you can see that for the, for, you know, you got retail down here at about, you know, for the parcels that we have A and B, somewhere around six hundred thousand dollars to a little over two million dollars, let's say, for a hotel use. So, it can be a pretty big swing depending on the land use. And again, this is only as good as the inputs you put in. So, this isn't like word of, you know, someone up high coming down and saying, this is all you could ever get or you're definitely going to get this. The idea is that you build these models, you try to have the best inputs you can. We've spoken to developer, real-world developers about these inputs to try to stress test these really and understand of, you know, how realistic we're being on these. And we also just spoke to developers and understood what they were paying for parcels in the region and in the metro area.
This gives you a good swag.
Exactly.
It's a bookend, right? It's just good information.
Right, so the two parcels that we looked at here, the eighteen thousand square feet and the thirteen thousand square feet, come to somewhere around point seven acres, okay? So, that's what we saw on that other slide. So, about six hundred fifty thousand dollars to about two million dollars is kind of the range of potential values as we see it. The highest values that we calculated come in for the hotel and residential uses. And that plays in pretty, you know, ties in pretty closely to what we're actually seeing being developed in and around the region. Again, the land values are highly sensitive to assumptions and parking is a major component. I can tell you that a lot of projects that just get, they just get killed when parking comes into play because the cost of building parking can just demolish developers pro forma. And we'll talk about that in a minute. But these values here assume that basically someone's going to either not build parking or they're going to have parking like tucked, like under the building, kind of like you see some of the condos already on the marina, like where you just drive under and there's parking there. So, these costs assume that or surface parking. They don't assume building like a big parking structure. So, another strategy is to ground lease, right? So, these would be values if you sold these, right? If you just outright sold these parcels. Another strategy would be to ground lease these. And so, typically, the developers and certainly their capital partners are going to want a long timeframe, right? They need to, the lease needs to be long enough that it makes sense for the mortgage or the debt payment on it. So, typically, it needs to be well north of forty years in terms of, for a lender to even consider it, consider lending on it because they need to make sure that there's going to be a long enough timeframe that they can get paid back. And like ninety-nine years, now this can vary depending on municipality. So, I'm not sure what the, you know, what would, you know, if there's any regulations here to speak of. But, you know, a lot of times you're looking at ninety-nine year land leases. They don't typically, you don't typically get revenue until revenue is earned. So, a lot of times, there's a grace period where there's either no money coming into the landowner or very little and it will ramp up over time. This is part of the agreement. I mean, every agreement's different, but that's pretty typical from our experience. And then you need to consider that the fact of, you know, you might get payments for, let's say, forever, right? For ninety-nine years, but the value of that money in the future, you know, you have to discount it, right? So, the idea is that if you could get money today, is it, you know, should be more valuable and gain that same amount of money in the future.
Yeah, well, just one comment. As we were talking through this, I don't think we went into it too much, but in terms of the risk on leasing is that purchase, we have the money in our hands right now. Use it for whatever. The ground leases is still always dependent upon the success of the developer going forward. So, there's a risk factor in that, just.
Right, yeah, and in a lot of cases, it becomes a partnership, right? So, a pretty typical way that, for example, like hotel land leases will operate is on percent of revenue, right? So, as the hotels do better, the landowner does better. And usually there's some cap on that and, you know, again, it depends how you structure the agreement. But it oftentimes is a shared risk and a shared reward. From our calculations, it would take about thirty years of a land lease right now to get to where you could be today if you sold those parcels. So, it'd take about that amount of time, give or take, to get to the same amount.
The other variable in a lease and, you know, a lot of time to talk about all this, but it's just the whole issue of does the city subordinate to financing and things like that? And, you know, which adds another layer of risk so that the developer can use the land as collateral for a loan.
So, another category, and again, this isn't really, this doesn't have to be separate from selling or leasing. It really is kind of more of a structure that would, you know, could encapsulate either of those, is this idea of a public-private partnership. Again, this idea that the city, you can, you know, leverage the city assets and capabilities with the private sector experience and expertise. You know, so an example here could be, you know, the city provides the land, private developer builds the steps and adjacent private development. I mean, that's, you know, that's just one idea, right? That could be a partnership, right? A very basic framework for a partnership. I mean, it's not going to be that simple. There's going to be valuation on the land, you know, both sides are going to do the valuation on the land. They're going to come to an agreement on what the land's worth, what the steps would cost to build, all that stuff. But the idea here is that maybe, you know, maybe the developer could, for example, better integrate the uses and leverage the development cost. So, we priced this, these steps out, or, you know, Jeff's cost estimator priced these steps out in a vacuum. They're not priced with assuming development happens next to them because we had to because we don't really know what's going to happen next to them. But hopefully, hopefully, and we would expect this to happen, a developer could come in and say, I can do this better and cheaper and here's how, right? And so, and that's where there can be a lot of leverage there. You know, maybe the city then can also get a public amenity, maybe at a reduced out-of-pocket cost by doing that, right? If someone can actually come in and do it better and cheaper, then you benefit, right? You get this public amenity and it becomes a, hopefully, again, a win-win. The, there's always going to, parking's always going to be, you know, something that comes up with any kind of development strategy and any development negotiation. Right now, I don't know if it's true that no existing parking, basically very few existing parking spaces would be taken out for citing these early phases of development. And we can go back to maybe an aerial here just to see that. I mean, this is, so this is boat and there's maybe a couple spaces here. We haven't counted, but there, it seemed very not consequential in terms of the number of parking spaces.
Yeah, Adam, one other comment. I think, and I don't know if we got it on a board or not, but we looked at, as we were talking about the, if you go back, the additional, at any rate, to the south of the steps. I think we had about thirteen, there, thirteen thousand? We have considered for everyone in council that we also looked at a smaller building to the south, about half the size of that approximately. And so, just for the sense that none of this is a lock-in, these are just concepts. And maybe that it's that size, it could be something less. It could be, you know, designed in the context of what you're describing. So, I just wanted these not to be the set in stone.
You could shrink or enlarge and if you wanted to go out in the public right of way, you could, you know, you could change them as well. So, there.
I think you could also just do one of the parcels in conjunction with the stairs in phase one. So, you could take the larger parcel and the stairs and just build that piece and then, you know, move the smaller piece into a second phase.
Right, you know, and there could be some real legitimate reasons to do that. You prove up phase one, the land in phase two is worth more. So, that's, that could be a calculated strategy.
So, our takeaway on parking is that there's a lot of surface parking here. Building parking from a developer standpoint is very expensive. And in fact, if we run the numbers on a per acre basis and add And in fact, if we run the numbers on a per acre basis and add structured parking at $30,000 a parking stall, that's pretty typical above-ground parking structure cost. It basically, it basically makes none of these land uses work. Like a developer couldn't pay you, like you'd have to pay them to develop something. And this is why you don't see people build structured parking in developments in areas where you're getting the rents and the sales values or whatever that we see in this region. It just doesn't work, right? So it works once you get over a certain threshold. And hopefully, we get over that threshold, but we're, we're not there yet. And we, we're not, you know, in our, in our models, we're not going to assume some fantasy number just to make a pencil. Right? We have to assume market realities with, you know, in this case, a bump because you're located on the water, there's something exciting happening here. It's new. So we, we took all that into account, but we, we basically take the same perspective that we would for a private developer. We were doing this analysis for a private developer, how will we position that, these properties? And so essentially, you know, building structured parking will, will mostly make developers just say, "Thanks, but no thanks." Right? So the question is, how can we, how could someone actually make parking happen here, right? And so there, there certainly are areas right now that, that could be used for the developer looking at these, at these early phases to just surface park. And, you know, if you, you know, if you look at all the hotels, for example, being built right now that are under construction, almost all of them still have surface parking, right? I mean, that's, almost all of those don't pencil if you start building garages. Certainly not below ground, but even above-ground garages typically don't work. And so they utilize the existing surface parking. Now here, what we, what we're not saying is we're going to sell a one-acre parcel to a hotel. Because that would, like a pretty typical parcel for a hotel user is like around an acre to two acres. But a lot of that land, same for a shopping center, right? It's like, a lot of the land is taken up by parking, right? Same with an office development. Like a lot of these concepts, you see especially in more suburban or kind of, you know, next tier out urban areas, is a lot of the land gets taken up by parking. So the good thing is, we have that parking here. The question is from a, from the cities and communities standpoint, you know, how do we want to utilize that? And can we utilize it to incentivize developers here? Our, our perspective as a team is yes, that there is something here to actually use as a negotiation tool. And, and then certainly from a development strategy standpoint, you know, identifying tenants and partners is, is going to be critical. And there's already action happening on that, right? And this is something that's a really continuous and, and truly iterative process, right? But, you know, are there office users that are interested, right? Whether it's GSA, the port, is there someone interested in doing coworking here, right? Do you have, I mean, this would take a, you know, you'd have to analyze this, but you have people here that work from home, that would like to work, you know, and not from home. You have people that, that commute, that, that commute into Seattle just to go to a coworking space, right? Maybe, maybe not. Like, are there people in the region that do that? A brew pub, there's been, you know, there's already been some conversations with a, you know, someone who at least has expressed some interest in, in the site and the area. And same with a, with a potential inn or a hotel developer.
The more effort and work and shoe lever on everyone's part done on this is probably the, is, is probably the thing that will make this project happen. And, you know, certainly the port, you know, the coworking is just, it's a, it's, it's something like with WeWorks and things like that have just taken off. And my intuition, the experience says, if you built a coworking space that was really well done in a, in a place that was executed like we're talking about, it would be, it would be a success. But, but I think you would have to underwrite it with a, with a lead tenant or a partner like with the port or something like that to prove it up, you know? Because, but it's wor, it's worth the effort. It's worth, it's worth the effort.
Make it happen. You could have a major tenant in there and, and also have coworking, for example.
Exactly.
So it could be, it could be a mix. I mean, again, this is, you know, these are ideas, right? This is not, this is not prescriptive. We're not saying do this, or this is definitely what would work. But these are real conversations of already happening. These are some thoughts that we're already having in terms of conversations with real world developers. But this is, this is critical. You've got a great team here actually that are, you know, having those conversations and tours already. So from a financial standpoint, we look at the cost of the stairs ranging somewhere between, let's call it two and a half to $4 million, depending on elevator and somewhat on design and actually cost, right? Because we've got cost ranges. And phasing and soft costs, which are these, right? Like, or, you know, we plug them in 30%, maybe, like this is where a developer might be able to bring these down to 15%, right? The, and then we compare them to the parcel values of those two parcels, A and B, at, at those sizes that we have. Again, so those, that can, this can vary. You can see that there's a gap, right? So that gap can be maybe as, as little as $500,000 here, or as much as maybe if you took this and this, three and a half million. And I think like a lot of things in life, it's probably somewhere in between, right? But for us, this was important, getting to this, you know, it's still a swag, but it's a, it's a better swag, if you will, than what we had before. Because before we didn't know, you know, was it going to be 5 million or 10 million, right, or, or 1 million? We really didn't know what that order of magnitude was. So now we have an order of magnitude of what this could mean financially, right? Given real steps, like a real design for steps and real parcel sizes with some real land uses and, and values plugged in there. So our, our team's recommendations are, you know, I think pretty clearly to try to utilize something like the steps as a catalyst to incentivize development, to allow for the use of existing shared parking to incentivize, right? And to have private development happen. You know, certainly find someone who's interested in partnering ideally. I mean, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of advantages here to, to finding that partner and having it be really a true public-private partnership. And, and then certainly there's a gap here, right? So if you built the steps as-is, and if you took the values as-is, as we have here, there's a gap. And so how do you fill it, right? Do you bond it? You know, is it, does it happen with a partnership, right? Where the private developer maybe does have cost efficiencies or other kind of efficiencies that they can, they can utilize? Can you get other partners involved to actually help fill that, fill that gap?
So Adam, one concept too, is that the last three things you identified are in no way exclusive of each other. You could use a combination of all three of those.
So our, our team's perspective and recommendations, I guess, in terms of next steps would be, you know, the following. One is to determine the allowable uses. You know, I think this is something that, that has been, you know, we're, we're use agnostic here from a consulting standpoint. We're just saying, you know, here's what the market, you know, suggests, right? You know, certainly the, you know, the city needs to figure out what, really what's allowed here, what's going to be allowed. Because that's going to drive a lot of the type of interests that you get, right? You know, what, what kind of developer interest you'll get. So determining what's allowed, you know, identifying the preferred development strategy too, right? Are you comfortable selling a parcel? If not, what are the other options? Do you, you know, is it, is it strong preference to find a partner and do this partnership-wise or not? So that, that's a pretty important next step as well. You know, designing the steps, I mean, what we have here, and we have a lot of other drawings that we didn't want to show because it made it look like they were too designed in a way. But, you know, there, there is a next step of designing the steps, right? So we have this initial concept, but really to get it to that next level would be refining the cost and constructability and, and, and maybe even the feasibility of some of the things, right?
I think visualizing that sort of experience of, of being on the steps and utilizing the steps.
Preparing, you know, af- after you get to understanding and consensus around those, ideally you then would prepare a request for proposal. And ideally, it's something that you're already kind of working with people, so that you're already back-channeling and having conversations with interested developers. So it's not some RFP that just goes out and, you know, you hope someone responds to. Like, you already know you're going to get responses by, by the time you put it out. You know, you, you need, you need a finance plan, right, for, for, for working this. It's our understanding there's a waterside analysis that is, that, that is being looked at. Michael can speak to that. And then, you know, certainly work planning a timeline and putting responsibilities to those.
Yeah, appreciate that. So the, the waterside analysis was interesting because as we did the open house on the Argosy, it became glaring that we were, we were not taking advantage or looking carefully enough at the water side of the equation in terms of the marina itself and what kind of, you know, services are provided by the marina, what kind of boaters we're trying to attract in, what the, the, the whole dynamic of that would be. And how could we integrate and make sure that we follow a parallel path with the land side development and the marina side development? So we started paying attention to that, and we worked with a number of, of the, the marina tenants and are currently going to be engaging a kind of international marina consultant in the fall to help us look at what's, what's commensurate with the presentation you all just had right now from Robert and, and Adam and Jeff. And, and the thing about, so that's, that's really exciting because I think there's synergies there we can take advantage of. And for example, Boutique Hotel could also be some type of event center for, you know, marina guest moorage or yacht clubs or the, you know, existing tenants. And, and in that regard, I think one thing that's been very positive was Scott, our acting harbor master, held a marina tenants association meeting for the first time that had been done to, to make sure that we're hearing what the marina tenants are concerned about, and they're also understanding what we're trying to accomplish. And so then that lends itself to, this is, this is not the final version. Because in the final version, we added a bullet point here which is critical, and I see Bill over there looking at me. And that is that we, we are going to go through, as we have been, but continue extensive community input as we refine opportunities so that, that what we come up with is reflective of the policies and goals the council established and what the community wants to see and how to, how to make that successful kind of marriage of those, of those elements, the water side and the, and the land side and the connectivity to the downtown. So thank you for bringing that up.
Well, I'm glad you, you add that because I think what you experienced before where it's like throwing a party that no one comes to. The worst thing is to put an RF, put something out there that no one responds to or the types of people. So I would never put a request out that you didn't know the answer to because it, it, it takes the wind out of your sails, right? It, 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 you know, it's, it's deflating and it's a false start. And in development, a false start is, you just work hard to avoid a false start. So the request for proposals is easy to do, but it's what happens before that's really the most important in my experience. So I'm glad you, I'm glad you're doing that.
So yeah, that's, that was our presentation and...
Okay, so Councilmember Back is, had a question for a while, so I'm going to give him first to the floor.
So, yeah, thanks. A lot to think about, and it's a lot of hypotheticals. So I wanted to make sure I understood on the public-private partnership part of it. The steps and possibly developing something to the north and to the south of the steps. If that was a, a, a private party that actually built the steps, but the steps is still a public amenity. So the steps technically would be, could, could be in this scenario, could be privately owned, but it would still be for public use. But the owner would be responsible for the maintenance of that. And I'm thinking specifically of the Pike Place Hill Climb that connects the waterfront to Pike Place Market. And those steps are maintained by the owner of the Fix and the Mador buildings. They pressure wash those every weekend and they got to pick up all the garbage. But it's still a public use type of thing. But the policing and the cleanup, maintenance and all that would be the private owner's responsibility and not the city's in that scenario. Is that, am I reading that correct?
It could be.
Okay.
It could be. I mean, Harbor Steps was developed by a private developer. It functions and operates as a, as a park, but it's owned privately. And the, the owner wanted to do that so the, the level of maintenance would be high. Level, you know, level of cleanup would be high. Didn't, didn't want it as a public. I'm not, I assume that the connection from, I don't know the answer, but I think the connection from the market down to the waterfront in the Pike Place Market, I assume that's going to be managed by the Pike Place Market. But, but we'd want to understand that. And, and for, for those who went on the tour and you heard the people from the Pike Place Market, that level of care and feeding is really important to this, to the, to the success. That it's kept really clean. They have a major security program there. And it's, it's really vital to, to its success.
We, we completed a, a tower recently where the adjacent street was vacated and went to the private developer. And then there was a public access easement and they're operating with, and they're operating, the, the private developer is responsible for the street.
Yeah, and I mean, I mean, it's a negotiation point here.
Yeah, so, and then my last question. I understand from a developer's perspective, it's better for them if they own the land instead of leasing it. But when you came up with the value of the land where the steps are possibly developing north and south, you threw out a number somewhere between a half million, $2 million. Now, that was based on, I'm, I'm assuming comparables for other types of developments that would be similar to what maybe could go here. But are you taking into consideration that that is waterfront property with views that I would think would command a lot higher price than someplace in the Kent Valley or something that doesn't have that kind of a view? Just a thought. I, I mean, is the waterfront view factored into that number that you threw out?
Yeah, definitely. So the assumptions that we have in there are, you know, for, for most of the land uses are positioned at a premium to what, I mean, they all are positioned at a premium to what you would find right now in the market. You know, mo- most of the developments in the market in, in the, in our sub-market, certainly in the city, are, are older developments. Right? So they're older, they're not on the water. So those are all taken into consideration. But it, it's hard, it's hard, you know, for some of these sites, like a, maybe a unique site like this, can be hard to, to, to position it off the bat, right? So that's what I'm saying, that, that's why we preface it by saying that the land values are highly sensitive to that, right? So it's not to say that it's, it's, it's only going to be worth that, right? But that it's, you know, you're still operating in a marketplace, right? So if you're an office user, yeah, you might find the guy that, you know, doesn't care about what he pays. But most office users are going to shop around. They're going to know what it costs to, to have an office space. Now, will they pay a premium to be on the water? Yes. Will that premium be 300%? Probably not, right? So there's, you know, there's, there's a give and take in terms of how we, we think about positioning this. But, I mean, yeah, there's not, you know, the point here is, again, it's, it's, it's a range of values. It's not, we're not saying it's definitely that value, right? And if you start plugging in a higher value for your assumptions on the leases and you keep everything else the same, you're going to get a higher land value potentially. So for sure, you know, I mean...
I think one of, one of the nuances, having laid out a series of different uses on the site now, is also the height, you know, severely restricted at three, at three stories. And the site's also very deep for the amount of, and sort of bound on both sides for the amount of perimeter that actually has the water view. So it's, it absolutely is, is the major asset, but you're, you're up against an embankment. There, there are some other challenges that are...
And uses if you, that you have to take...
They're limiting, uncertainly.
Yeah. I mean, you know, and again, it, you know, if you, if you parcel them out, for example, let's say you did an office space, right? And you parceled it out into very small spaces, you could get very high rents per square foot, right, for the same cost. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of different like scenarios you could lay out here. The goal here was not to, I mean, you, you know, this is five land uses we looked at. You could, we could spend months, like a couple, like a month just analyzing one land use and then coming up with values there. You know, the, the idea is given, given the best estimates and inputs that we can put in here today, what does that yield, right? And that, that was really the attempt here. But yeah, you're right. I mean, it, certainly it's a, it's a unique property. Could you find interested, you know, buyers that would pay a much more significant premium than that? We hope so, right? I mean, you know, we certainly would hope so. But that, you know, this is based on market, you know, market realities, right? So it's looking at comps, but it's also, again, it's backing out down into the land value. And it's saying, if you could, if you could rent like an office space for X and it costs you this much to build it, what does that leave left for the land once a developer has to make a certain return? That's, that's really how we derive those values.
Again, we're, we're at the early phases of this, so I, I don't think we, I think you guys have done a good job at estimates and swags. We have many steps to go before we, you know, take it to the next level. Councilmember Banks, you had your hand up. Are there others that are interested after you? Okay, so it'll be Councilmember Banks, Mahoney. Okay, so I'll recognize Councilmember Banks now and then Councilmember Mahoney.
I'm not sure if this is just a comment or, doesn't have to go into a lot of detail, but you mentioned security. And I appreciate that the private developer for the steps in Seattle decided to keep that. That's, that's a huge cost as well as the maintenance of it. So that's something to really take into consideration because you know, I, the harbor steps are awesome. I mean, however you want to call them. But we do have issues with that. And I mean, it's, it's something that I would love to go to and walk down and walk up and make sure that when I walk up and down it, no matter what time it is, that it's secure. Now, the other thing is the bullet about community input. I know we're in the early stages, but we've had a briefing, when will this be provided to the community? Or are we there? Or are we there? Are we further, do we have to wait further down the line?
Yeah, you know, I think that kind of where we are in the sequence was that we had the briefing in May on the design, some of those options, then taking the input from the Argosy Open House. This was about coming up with development strategies. How could we get from A to B? And we have input as to what the types of uses that the community at least identified were preferences for them. And so with this, with some sense of strategy, and I mean, I would hope to the degree we're able, part of the next steps is direction to proceed relative to what's an appropriate strategy to follow. I think at that point, we go back to the community and report on where we've gotten to and what we're looking at doing. The fact, there's a very interesting article that Robert had sent over about phasing. And it was, phase one has got to be, and I'll share that with council, oh, you want to do that right now? Bonnie's going to share that with council right now, but the idea was that the phase one has to be a standalone. You can't depend phase one on, you know, on future phases. So I think that's the discussion with the community. We can do these things, kind of what's everyone's interest or position on that. So, yeah, the time to get inputs now.
That's helpful. I will say, this is really an awesome presentation. Some of it's a little dry, but we're awake. That's really good. But you've done a good job with the information that we've provided.
Bonnie, Councilmember Mahoney.
And we've got a treasure. It's not just the waterfront, it's also the park. I mean, we've got something I don't think too many cities have, which is a marina and a park. So that, hopefully, will go a long way, we'll see. Thank you, though.
I'd like to dovetail real quick off a point that you made about security. Michael and I were talking earlier. I'm now, as many of you know, spending my days downtown. And what I've noticed is, because I work in the field of security, lampposts, signs for businesses, they all have these embedded HD cameras these days. And I think we need to be really, you know, of course, we have to respect privacy and where these things are aimed, but the fact is, I will, I walk around some buildings and there's, they put, like, these landmark signs out in front, and then there's this little hole in there, and it shoots all the way down the sidewalk. So it's just paying attention to what's on the sidewalk, not what's going on in the building or on the, and this is the kind of thing, when we are doing this stuff, we should have this in the design as we go, because it will only help our law enforcement agency know what they're, you know, know what they're heading into, see what the issues are, and it will keep our community much safer. LED lights oftentimes have, right here in the base of them, a camera. And I think it's just, it's unfortunate, but these are the days we live in, and when you have public areas, you have to make sure you've got some visibility all the time. So that's something to think about.
I agree. I think our communities that live around there would be in agreement.
I believe they would, and again, you have to do it in a wise, respectful way, but, yes. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought you guys did a great job. I just want to compliment you on that. I thought you took into account the height restrictions, which are very important to the residents around there, what's reasonable as far as coming toward the water, looking at the parking options. So I want to thank you. I thought that was a, I think it was a realistic idea of what we can do, and in the assessment, we need to know of how things are going to cost, what we can sell them for. Couple questions I have. So in the Harbor Steps, just an idea, but we have the ADA complacency, and what I saw was a problem with that. It seemed to me maybe a partnership with whatever building might go to the north side of the Harbor Steps might incorporate a shared elevator to accomplish both missions. I think that's worth looking at. And then, you spent quite a bit of time on the development strategies, and my question to you guys is, if you were the ones to choose, what would be your combination? Would be the sales or lease? Would the public partnership maybe in combination? What would be your preferred choice as you assess this?
Well, I think, I'd probably answer it this way, that I'd probably do a limited sale, and I probably would look at the public-private partnership. Because I think that's the, you know, part of what drives me is this first phase, because, and, so the idea is, doesn't align with me to do a park without private investment happening. And, you know, we can debate whether I'm right or not, but that's my belief, and having a structure that aligns the parties is the best way to accomplish that. And so, I think if you get alignment, that is, you know, so it's really a sale or a lease, but it's done under the guise of a public-private partnership. Because I think, I think that would be a better outcome for the city and for the citizens. That's my belief, so.
So I guess the second part is, sales or lease, and if lease, what type of length of time?
Well, I mean, the time will be dictated by a lot of things. If a lender will require at least 50 years, you know, there's, so probably 50 years with another 48 years. If you go beyond 100, it's, there's something that's triggered, so you can't go beyond If there's a hotel, maybe you can do a ground lease, but I would, answering tonight, I'd say a sale. I'd say a sale, because it brings more interest.
Right.
A lot of developers are just gun-shy of lease, but I can point to three or four that I'm personally involved in, so I'm not, but I'm just saying it limited the number of people.
The collateral's a big asset, is what you're saying?
It is, and it's harder to finance, it's just harder. Harder to get equity, it's just another layer.
I mean, there are some advantages, right? So like, you know, developer doesn't, you know, if they get a land lease, they don't have to pay, right, a big amount of money upfront? So that can be advantageous to certain types of developers. You know, I guess our perspective is that you're more, if we take the perspective of, you know, what we would recommend, it's really to give you guys, you know, the community here, more options, right? It's not to prescribe, do this, it's to give you more options. And our belief is that a sale gives you more options, right? By doing the lease, it's not that you couldn't do it, it's just that your field just narrows pretty significantly, right? There are some land uses that won't, don't, do not work at all at a land lease. It just don't work. So you're going to take some land uses off the table. And then there are a lot of developers that are just, don't have any, like, don't have comfort level with that. They don't have experience with it, or they don't want to do it. So our, you know, from that perspective, I think the sale will yield you more responses.
Particularly for the first phase, which is, I'm just trying to have it where there's less questions. Once you prove it up, once you prove it up, and if it's done well, there will be a second phase, and rents will go up, land values will go up. If they don't, then phase one, by definition, wasn't well done, or the market has changed so much that nothing is happening.
Just kind of adding to that, I'll put on an economic development hat right now, is that I think one of the things that's problematic about looking at a lease personally is the idea that, you know, Des Moines has arrived at a very kind of unique place in our history, which is, we're no longer kind of, I don't know, I guess begging's the word, for development to happen. Development's happening, and we're on the winning side of that equation. And I guess my concern is that leases are, tend to be complicated, and also, developers are going to require certain concessions in order to do that, and, because they know as well as we know that there's not that equal level of demand. And so I don't want to see us engage in a process where we're giving up things in order to get a lease to work, as opposed to a sale, which is more transactional, but also establishes that cooperation and partnership and the conditions that we can apply, security, whatever they are. So just my own view.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Luisa, you had a final question?
Actually, it's just for clarification, because I am not aware or familiar with, what's the difference between limited sale and outright sale?
I was speaking more to the overall strategy of not saying you should sell everything, and so it was really, it's my focus on that phase one was what I meant by a limit, and it's not like you're going to go sell all the acreage.
Okay.
And just so we're crystal clear, when we talk about a limited sale, we're talking about what you were presenting tonight, this parcel A, parcel B concept, that's it.
Right?
Okay.
Councilmember Buxton?
This is more of a comment. I as well would like to thank you for the work and your presentation, well done. And looking at the pictures can excite, I think, even people who maybe are reticent to jump in. And as we move forward, I think for me, the question is not so much lease or sale, but quality. And so I would mention, let's say financially, we decide, oh, it'd be way better for us to just, or conceptually, do the lease thing, but if we've got somebody that's coming to the table, that's going to provide a way better quality product, first impressions die so hard, and this is going to be a regional impression, it's not just going to be the citizens of our city. There are people, well, there were people here from the region, I mean, the region is waiting with bated breath for us to do something with our marina, and if we do a poor job because we're afraid of a two- or three-year squishy time, I feel like this investment is a decades investment, it's a future investment for my kids, for my grandkids. And one of the frustrations I even find in our city right now is our predecessors didn't invest well. We don't hardly, we don't have any quality brick-stone buildings that we can revitalize and make cute and quaint like Post-Daly Downtown. If we want that look, we're going to have to require facades. I mean, I'm, so, even in the past, the investment hasn't been quality in our streets and avenues, and I'm jealous over the quality of investment more than this beginning concept, so.
I think that's something really good for us to think about. What I would like to steer the council away from is, I think the comments and the points are absolutely excellent, but I really don't want to get us into, this was, you know, looking at this particular phase, the concepts and how we find a way to move forward. The, you know, the truth of the matter is, whether you go for a long-term lease or a partial sale or something like that, that's some flexibility that we have in conversation that we have to have and determine as we go forward. I think we need to let Michael and the team, you know, kind of start to work through this stuff and come back to us with what they think the best possibilities are for success. I also really applaud the visuals. We spend a lot of time talking and looking at the written word, but this is something that helps us really conceptualize the hard work that you guys have done, and really puts it into some, a mental image. And I'm excited, you know, the public, through TV or streaming on the web, can see some of this tonight, but I'm excited to actually take this stuff out at the appropriate time. I know Michael's got some, as mentioned, there's some next steps that he has to go through with the team before we do that, but I'm looking forward to that. And I think the biggest challenge for all of us is, how fast can we make this happen? You know, and we've been, for many of us, especially, I can say myself, because I guess I've been here longer than most, but I couldn't be more excited. This is the closest we've been to reality. And we've got to figure out how to get this to happen, because as you said, Tracy, it is an investment, it's way beyond us. This is going to take us out for a long time. And you're right about the real estate in the city. You're absolutely correct. It's pretty much redevelopment. So, with that, Mike?
No, just last thing, I mean, thank you guys, that's awesome. And I think from council, I guess I'd like a sense of, you know, what we can do to move this forward relative to council giving direction. And I'm thinking that, you know, we identified some of the next steps potentially. Maybe what we can do is that, at a future meeting, bring forward a recommendation to you as to how we could proceed, and then have, continue this discussion. Does that make sense?
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Okay, great.
So before I take us, that does conclude the business. We head our agenda before I take us to a discussion over whether or not we adjourn. The, I do want to remind the council that we had made commitments around the Police Foundation auction, and I guess they call it not your mother's bingo, wild west bingo, something like that. Anyway, and so, if you brought your checkbook, please see Bonnie, she's collecting, she's got the envelopes, and she's collecting for both. Or if you need to make other arrangements, please make them with Bonnie before you leave tonight, so we, because we did commit to tables. So, with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we have several motions. They're all saying the same thing, so if they're, if people are agreeable to merging them, I'll say the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.